Regular meeting of Windsor Heights City Council come to order. Roll call.
Joseph Jones.
Here.
Mike Jones.
Here.
Arms?
Yes.
LaFerrera?
Yes.
Skiers?
Yes.
Please join me in pledging allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible in its essence.
Next item is the approval of the agenda. Due to lack of information, we will remove item number H under new business. Motion to approve. Roll call.
LaFerrera?
Yes.
Siri? Yes. Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
We have several public hearings. Does that make a motion to open the public hearing on the 2021 budget? I'll say. Roll call.
Arms?
Yes.
Skiers?
Yes.
LaFerrera?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Motion to approve. Actually, we have no public still. Motion to close the public hearing. So.
Second.
Is there just a quick question? Is there any chance that folks can, would, or are posting comments on Facebook that we could consider just for being receptive of what's going on?
No, we'll be able to see them if they popped up a few times. So if someone does post something, he would see it.
Okay, so the folks that are watching, if they want to write something on there during that public comment period, we will read it and ask the question then? Is that fair?
You guys may, so they're not going to be able to hear you unless you guys speak directly in your microphones.
I'll do a good job.
I'm trying to speak into my microphone. So my comment was that if people have questions during the public hearing portions, then that they would, they could certainly write those and then we'll ask them and answer them. Fair?
Sure.
Okay, great.
No comments?
Yeah, there's no comments right now.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call. Already done with that? Okay, next item is consideration of resolution 2020-34 adopting the fiscal year 20 to 21 budget. Motion. Any discussion from council?
Anything change since last time?
Not a thing.
Thought you were going to give us a couple more pennies. No kidding, I'm kidding, you did a great job.
I could, you definitely could. We have 15 more days, so it has to go in.
Nice work.
Yeah, $2.04, 2.0482, to be exact. It went down, that's how much it went down.
Good job, thank you.
Well, that's Mark. That was Mark.
I appreciate the comment, but Charlene, or Charlene, Rochelle did. Too many people. Did a bunch of the work on this. I just threw some numbers at her and she figured out how to make a workout.
No further comments from council? Roll call.
Arms?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
LaFerrera?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Skiers?
Yes.
Next item is open the bid award hearing for University Avenue. Motion to open. I'm a. Roll call.
Wait, who was the first?
Mike.
Sorry, I wasn't paying attention, I'm so sorry. Gotcha, gotcha, sorry.
Got some eating today.
Um, Siri? Yes, LaFerrera?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Be decided, you are the public.
Just as Bolton make, I think everything you need is there unless you have some other questions about anything on that. It's all went through the DOT, we didn't open bids type of thing, so they took care of all that. Then kind of all ran through them at that point. Like we got three bids and whatever, so if there's any questions, I don't know what else to add, I guess.
Have we, have you worked with this group before?
Elder, Elder's pretty big. Not, I haven't personally, but we've worked with them. Well, working with them on some other projects, so.
We did have a comment come in from John McKee, who was not particularly happy with this, hasn't been for a long time, and he wanted to make sure that we filed his concern as part of the meeting, and that will be done, so.
Can I, can I comment? With the bonding now and the Fed's rates continuing to go down to about zero, I'm guessing we should get a very favorable interest rate on the bonds.
Certainly would hope so, but the sale is April 6th, so there's a few.
Well, that's good, I think that's better, yeah.
Yeah, so there's a few days between.
Yeah, I don't think we're really going to have a lot of changes within the next three weeks.
The timing is very fortunate now.
Yeah, yeah, so. I would expect maybe pretty low rates, very low rates, I think you're right. Okay.
Hearing no further, move to close the bid hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
Skiers?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
LaFerrera?
Yes.
Motion to consider resolution 2020-35 awarding the University Avenue construction project to Elder Corporation the amount of $6,743,000.
Number two, approve.
Second. Roll call.
LaFerrera?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Skiers?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Next item is resolution 2020-36 approving a scope and fee proposal from Bolton Mink for the construction services not to exceed 697,788.
Number two, approve.
Second. Roll call.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Skiers?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
LaFerrera?
Yes.
Next item is public forum. Set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than what's on the agenda.
I'll just stay here.
No action will be taken. You got it?
Lauren Campbell says, sorry, chamber activities this month have been canceled or postponed, please follow the chambers page for more info. That includes the, Edie texted me, that includes the Celebrate Windsor Heights and then after, after-work drinks event.
Okay, so noted.
Thanks, Dalton.
I got a text message from Edie as well. Due to new developments in our community and beyond, we feel it is in the best interest of our community to postpone our annual Celebrate Windsor Heights event. The board, in conjunction with the City of Windsor Heights, will be working together to find an appropriate time to reschedule this event. We understand that reservations have been paid for and we are working diligently on how to best distribute refunds and/or exchanges to the new date. As things are still developing in our community, we want to make sure we're making the best decision for our, for our organization and our membership. Business after hours that was scheduled this week is canceled, thank you and stay well. Those are the only two comments that are registered so far.
Thank you. Just to them, next item is consent agenda, any item may be removed for separate consideration. Move through.
Second.
Roll call.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Siri?
Yes.
LaFerrera?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Next item is new business, consideration of bonding resolutions. Item I 2020-36A is a resolution setting the date of April 6th for the sale of general obligation urban renewal bonds, series 2020B, and authorizing the use of preliminary official statement in connection therewith, $7,500,000.
Number two, approve.
Roll call.
Siri?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
LaFerrera?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Next item is basically the same 2020-36B, setting a date for the sale of general obligation corporate purpose and refunding bonds, 2020A, and using preliminary official statement in connection therewith, $8,500,000. Date of the sale will be 4/6.
Number two, approve.
Second. Roll call.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
Siri?
Yes.
LaFerrera?
Yes.
The next item is setting a public hearing for resolution to approve the 2020 PCC patching project plans and specifications and setting a public hearing, that date will be 4/20.
Second.
Can I ask a question about that patching? You know, the maps are always hard to read because of the print, but these two colored ones. If I look at those, it's a little, I'm not an expert on this, I admit it, but I understand that 70th Street patching can be hit with. And then if I go to the other, other two photos, I'm not quite certain what I'm looking at here. I mean, the one, the first one that I have, it shows, I think the part going to the Y at the part.
Yes.
Okay. And then the one preceding that is where?
Um, it's the bridge, so it's the approaches to the bridge on all, so it'll be four different, both sides of the bridge is kind of.
And then the, the opposite page, it shows a long white strip, looking like there's patching the entire lane.
Yeah, that is the one from in front of Y.
It's on the west side, 73rd.
Yeah, so it's south.
How, how long a strip is that?
Four hundred something feet. It's 400 something feet.
Okay, because these other ones, I could read the little numbers there, 39 feet.
Yeah, that one, so the, the ones by the bridge approach, I just put some measurements because they're a little bit different than just a normal patching since it does deal with the bridge. So yeah, the, the longer one is front of the Y there, it's kind of some of the lane and turning lane just where it's patching.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
LaFerrera?
Yes.
Siri?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
Next item is consideration resolution 2020-38, setting the date April 6th for public hearing on ordinance 2020-02, amending the Windsor Heights code of ordinances related to nuisance abatement charges. Motion.
Number two, approve.
Second. Roll call.
LaFerrera?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Siri?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
Next item is consideration of resolution 2020-39, resolution thanking Jim Eggers for his service, and I am going to read it. He sent a letter of resignation from the PNZ. It's been his privilege and honor to serve the City of Windsor Heights for the last 20 years, having spent most of those years as chairman, had the opportunity to work with some very dedicated, motivated, intelligent people. To say that it's been a pleasure is an understatement, but he's come to a point in his life where other endeavors are appearing, and he feels the need to follow those. Time has come for others to come forward and enjoy the benefits of service. Thank you all for the opportunity to have been of service. If you feel my services are needed in the future for short-term projects, please feel free to contact me. Again, thank you for allowing me to serve. Resolution 2020-39 is a resolution to express appreciation to Jim Eggers for his years of service as a member and chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Windsor Heights Island. Whereas Jim Eggers has loyally served the citizens of Windsor Heights, both as a member and chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission for 20 years, whereas his dedication to Windsor Heights has vastly benefited the city and its citizens. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the City of Windsor Heights City Council, on its own behalf and on behalf of the officials and residents of the City of Windsor Heights, expresses sincere gratitude to Jim Eggers for his dedication to our community and wish him all the best.
Number two, approve.
Second. Roll call.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Siri?
Yes.
LaFerrera?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
If you're watching Jim, thank you. Next item is consideration of resolution 2020-40, approving and authorizing signatories on behalf of the City of Windsor Heights, Iowa, for a banker's trust checking account.
So moved. In a second.
Any comment?
Just a quick question, so it says any two of the three, so I'm confused, like.
That's wrong, sorry.
Three is incorrect, so thank you for pointing that out.
Any two, any two of the proceeding is what it should say.
Right.
Okay, sorry about that.
We could amend the resolution to that effect if you would like to do that.
I'm happy to do that verbally, so I'm just, I meant it to what we just said, so it's any two of the authorized signers or however that should read.
Okay, second stand.
I was asked, just, there were people were wondering why this changes and how many people, like in the past on this checking account, how many people there were.
We didn't, this didn't exist, which was really crazy, you guys didn't have this, and you should, and so most of the signers on there, except for the city administrator, was not on there prior. But with this emergency situation that's coming up, we felt like it was important to have a number of signers and then myself as a alternate if, if just in case of emergency, everybody else was not available. But Mike Jones was already on there, Mayor was already on there, Travis was on there, I was on, I'm on there. It was just Mark that's not on there to sign in case of an emergency, meaning with the coronavirus that's come up.
Usually it's Travis and me.
Yes, it's normally the mayor and Travis, and we will continue that from this point forward. I mean, Mike had to sign this past week because Travis was out, we just are in case, just in case.
Do we have any policy that doesn't require an elected official to be, I don't know, I don't know what is standard practice or policy, but.
There's, it varies across, every city varies. Some cities don't have any elected officials sign at all, and some cities only have elected officials sign, and some have a mix of both, which is probably the, a good choice, but completely up to you guys. If you decide that you don't like how this looks or what this looks like, we can change it and do it differently.
I'm satisfied with it.
Motion to approve?
Yeah, we have a question in a second.
Roll call.
Uh, Siri?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
LaFerrera?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Next item is resolution 2020-42, creating a temporary community center fee reimbursement policy due to the public health threat of the coronavirus, COVID-19.
I never say that word.
So moved.
So I wrote, make sure we're good here.
I wrote this memo, Whitney and I worked on this on Thursday night, and there's obviously been quite a bit of change since then, so with the recent recommendation that came out today that you avoid gatherings of 10 or more people, I think it would probably be more responsible to just shut the center down for the next month. There are five weddings in there, so that is going to be a pretty steep decision. Regardless of what you decide, the financial impact of this through May 17th is going to be about $17,000. But I do think that it's fair that if we're not going to let people use the space, we reimburse them, and currently the facility use agreement says that there are absolutely no reimbursements, so.
Did we talk to any of the wedding people?
No.
So is this, is this still accurate what you have written here?
The numbers are accurate, but the recommendation, I guess, is going to change because packet went out Friday, so it's just been a lot changed in the last setting two hours, so.
And, and probably beyond.
Right, yeah, so we were going to say it's optional if you guys want to cancel your events through, we're going to give events scheduled through May 15th, but I think that now it'd be more responsible to force closures until April 15th and follow basically what the schools are doing. That's a, that's a decision that I would not care to make myself, and unfortunately we have council meetings, you guys can help with that.
Do you want it until when, April 15th or May 15th? Those, those are the two options.
I mean, it's whatever you guys want to make it.
My thinking is, okay, you can always extend it, right?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to have a sunset on this thing, so I want to say it's hard.
Well, yeah, I think April 15th sounds good, but since we now know that, or suspect that this may continue for some period of time in the future, maybe we should take this up at the next meeting, which is April 6th, and decide, do we want it to go further so that we can give people notice, which we're not able to do in this case.
Yeah.
It's such a compressed timeline.
What, how far out is it reserved?
I mean, we're booked until August of '21, I think I booked some for, for December of '21, and that was in like July last year, so.
Is it booked through April?
Oh, yeah, yeah, every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday in April is booked, five weddings between now and April.
Folks have to have time to make a change, as they're going to, if there's any spaces available.
Well, here's the deal, I think that if people want to, I mean, I'm looking at this from maybe a different perspective, that if somebody wants to cancel their event, then they can have a, they can have their money back, but if they don't want to cancel their event, don't you think that's up to them? If they want to use the space, then I look at it from the perspective that then they can use the space, and then maybe we look at cleaning, cleaning protocol that must be implemented in order to utilize the space.
And I did reach out to our cleaner and ask him to sanitize all surfaces afterwards, but a lot of our, our events, we got a two-hour window to clean it, and so I just don't know how realistic it is that the whole thing gets sanitized. So I mean, we can make adjustments, hey, given circumstances, you can't get in here as soon as you wanted to, but we talked to Brick Gentry about it, and I think, as, Mark had that conversation actually, so I'm going to defer to Mark on that one.
Well, I think their recommendation was to follow whatever the guidelines are that are in effect at the time, and I think those have changed even since Friday, so if the city is acting not in conformance with guidelines put in place by officials who are responsible to do that, then there's a risk of some, I don't know, liabilities, the word, I'm not, I shouldn't be speaking attorney speak here, but there.
Let's ask the attorney then.
Yeah, that's, we're all kind of making this up as we go along, but kind of the, the approach we're taking with cities is we're going to follow the CDC Department of Public Health guidelines. So because of that, even though we do have a situation, and I kind of always come down on your side to say, well, people want to do what they can, but I think as municipality, listening to what the governor's saying and what the CDC is saying, our feeling is we ought to follow those. And so if someone's going to have more than 50 people, for instance, the White House today said 10, CDC still says 50, if someone's going to have more than that, I think it behooves the municipality to say, we're going to follow that, they can't have more than 50. So you either shut it down totally or try to enforce that.
So, so that would be what the city could do, is say, the city will file the guidelines of officials who are designated to make those decisions, and if the number changes, I mean, they have to scramble around and try to do this again.
Yeah, because there might be some liability if you don't follow that.
Yeah, I mean, I think in the, in the end, that's going to be hard, but for somebody to prove that, in my world, the unusual always happens, so I would never say never, so yeah, I think it's just good policy.
I think what you're suggesting is, is to let them do it.
There's a thought about, most of these events have food and drink with a buffet line, and so obviously it's not, we got to provide a safe space for them, and so if somebody comes in, contaminates the building, and then the next group of 200 people comes in, and they get sick, then we've got, our, our building just became a vector, so. But again, it is not a decision we're taking lightly because it's an incredibly popular venue.
There's no way we can control the ability for them to come in and have their wedding and whatever, and they could have people from California, from all over the place, there's absolutely no control on there, and that puts us at definite risk.
Do we have a motion on this?
Not yet.
Yes, there's a motion in a second.
We do.
As of this discussion.
As of current grid.
So. So I'm going to jump right out of that one and ask that you amend to follow the guidelines put in place by other officials designated to make those recommendations and not adopt what's written in the packet.
That could mean that it changes between now and next week or the week after.
I think it's wise.
Well, what officials are you talking about, because there's getting a lot of different numbers from people, are you saying the CDC?
Or.
Are you saying the president?
I think we should say. How about we go with the CDC?
And the mighty page?
Just to throw another layer on this, what are the, I, we don't, I don't, sorry. Legally, if they have 51 people in there, how do you enforce that?
That's the difficult part as well.
Because my officers would not have a legal authority to kick somebody out of there based on a number that's set by this resolution. And that's just for discussion's sake, just keep that in mind in your head.
Yeah, if that's part of the contract, then if they do that, have more than 50 people, they don't have a case.
Well, I mean, but it puts an awful burden on the officer, but, but you could literally go, literally go in and do a head count, yes, you could, you can literally put a writer on the contract and say, you will not do this or get the city shut down, but that's just a whole other layer of problems in all of this, and most weddings aren't going to have 50 people.
Or we err on the side of caution and say, we're not going to take the liability of either PD being contaminated or anything else and just cut it, cartelage.
I mean, the current recommendation right now is roughly four weeks, minimal contact, right? So if somebody, if we're going to go by the Department of Public Health, it's 50, I think it's 50 people right now, so if somebody said, I'll just uninvite 150 people for my wedding, we're going to have 49 by the resolution. Oh, okay, come on in, man. So. I just. Well, I feel bad for anybody who has a wedding at this point in time, I know that everybody, for their wedding, puts a lot of time, effort, money, this is a situation that is out of everyone's control, and I don't feel right to say, okay, well, Mr. Police Officer, you need to count heads as they're going in, if there's 51, now what happens? And we've already exceeded, we've kind of contaminated, I, I personally just err on the side of caution and apologize to everybody that has had their plans kind of ruined, and kind of go from there personally.
If you couldn't reschedule, go see the JP and then have another wedding with all the cake and all the stuff at some point in time.
The JP?
Just as a basis.
They probably don't want you.
Is there some wedding clerk inside, we don't know that?
Be interested in your opinion.
Well, you know, it's just a thought.
I think it's a good, good motion.
I still think that you should, we should leave it to, if people want to do it, then that's my opinion, right? They, that if they're, they're putting themselves in that situation, that's my opinion.
I would follow the attorney's advice.
Can we go back to what the attorney's advice was, just so that I know, but you.
Our advice is at the very least that you follow the CDC and the Department of Public Health, maximum standards. Now, whether you want to do that as far as the enforcement aspect of it, but you certainly have to limit it to what those agencies say, and frankly, that probably will change in the next week or two, based on how fast things are going, but we would, we would say that would be your, your minimum, just as far as a policy issue.
So if it does go from 50 down to 40, down to 30, 20, 10, whatever, who's going to be doing the contacting of the people then, as we try to keep up to date with what the CDC is saying? Whitney? Whitney's reaching out.
The staff will take care of it.
Yeah. As it escalates, I'll take the ones that.
Let me, let me ask you this, are there precedents to these elsewhere?
Yeah, so libraries, law libraries are closing down.
Yeah, libraries are.
Community centers are closing down, ours is, ours, so it's called a community center, but it's really not in the true sense of the word, it's not a community center, you got people coming in, playing chess and drinking coffee, I mean, it's an.
And what about, do you know anything about like the American Legions or the ALPS or any of those?
Uh, VFW, Beardo's open last weekend.
Yeah, and the ALPS is.
It's going to be hard to shut down VFW.
Yeah.
Well, that's the thing, is like restaurants are open.
Right now they are.
Correct.
Prairie Meadows did close.
Prairie Meadows, they did at 5:00 tonight.
Oh, Prairie Meadows closed.
Yeah. Regardless of what we end up doing, it's both a change in policy and a pretty significant financial impact, so I think that it should be by resolution of the council, which is why I brought it to you guys, because this is not an easy one.
I would say err on the side of safety.
Our most current operation worldwide, less than 1% of all law enforcement officers in the US are selected to attend the National Academy in chiefing the cluster. in the U.S. are selected to attend the National Academy, and Chief McQuessin, the first person to attend and graduate from Windsor Heights. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Your floor. Assistant, you got any?
I was able to meet with Dalton and the public workers about two weeks ago. It was nice to meet all of the hard workers and to hear about their backgrounds and what they've kind of brought to the city and what they specialize in. Dalton and Craig gave me a tour of public works, and the building looks clean and organized, so I commend the staff for their hard work on cleaning things up there.
Because my last dark meeting, we talked about a have sent, what they added, I'll send you that, and also Elizabeth's report that talks about transit still running during this time period, at least for now, but you can see the full report of that, so people can still get around things and add on sometimes.
Michael?
I attended my first Bravo board meeting. Learned a lot, so the Bravo Gala is not just a really cool party. It's actually intended, intended to be a fundraiser, and they expect to raise around $240,000 this year. Also learning about the organization. One thing that kind of stuck out to me was during the presentation they gave, they, you know, listed cities where they had, they had given grants, and, you know, a lot of cities were listed, Windsor Heights is not one of them. I think the bigger reason is, is because they don't actually give these grants for arts organizations to individuals, they give them to organizations, and I don't think there are too many, correct me if I'm wrong, arts organizations in Windsor Heights. I certainly know of artists, but not organizations, so I think it's sort of important to, they're, they're very concerned about their identity and people understanding who they are and what they do, and again, I don't know if I said this last time, but they, they have such a small staff, but have so much money to give out, which is very good for the community. So it was very informative and kind of a sour note that obviously it's primarily funded through hotel motel tax, and there's a bit of concern about the COVID-19 affecting revenue in the second, second half of the year, so. That's it for me.
Sharice?
Metroways meets on 3/25. We were normally be scheduled for this week, but the spring break, it was not happening. I'm assuming we'll meet, I don't know that we, we won't. My Carlin youth choir is a recipient, they lead out of Windsor Heights Lutheran Church, and they are a recipient of Bravo dollars, so just for your permission. My kiddo is also Saint Carlin Youth Choir, so. Anyways, that's all I have, we'll let it alone. The legislature's not meeting, so.
Is that a smile?
No, it's actually, it delays everything.
Pre-construction meeting with Absolute Concrete for the College Avenue and the Ellis and 69th Street projects will be happening on Friday, probably not in person. Two part plan proposals were received, there's, these are being reviewed now. Rochelle and I participated in a ratings call with Moody's Investor Services this morning. Moody's will be issuing a ratings determination on March 27th for use by prospective purchasers for the two bond issues to be sold on April 2nd. A consultation session with the Des Moines and West Des Moines School Districts of Polk County is scheduled for this coming Wednesday related to the urban renewal area property additions along 73rd Street, and I want to go ahead and have that, because if we don't, then we have to go back and start this clock all over again. Numbers of these consultation sessions that I've been involved with over in the past, people don't appear, so I would not be surprised if nobody came. I have not received any applications for the Planning and Zoning Commission vacancy, so anything you can do to encourage people to apply would be good. I participated in a coronavirus session with the West Des Moines School Districts and their communities today, and they're considering what they're going to do, which is changing by the hour practically. And I'm continuing to hear about interest in the property on the southwest corner of 63rd University, so I don't know when something's going to happen, but the Realtor and the church are continuing to have conversations with various companies about that, so I think that's good.
Nothing specific on the...
No, I, I'm reluctant to say much because we've just got a small piece of that puzzle. I mean, is Hy-Vee still open? I think so, but there are others also.
Good.
Thank you.
I think the rest of them are all probably written in the packet. Next item on this is to go into closed session. Motion to go into closed session.